We are, as you can tell, our roundtable discussion grew and grew and so now we're having a big table discussion. But really want to thank you all for being here and welcome you at the council chambers. Really been excited by the wonderful group of faith leaders from across Columbus representing congregations, parishioners, and community members of many different beliefs. I also welcome my colleagues, council president Zach Klein, council members Elizabeth Brown, council member Mitch Brown, council member Shannon Harden, and Priscilla Tyson will be joining us briefly. It's very special we have the opportunity to join together and share our support for one another, ensure constitutional rights of all members of our city are protected and that all residents are welcomed as full members of our community. This afternoon, council will be introducing a resolution co-sponsored by every member of city council to condemn religious intolerance and the rise of Islamophobia and declare support for the Muslim community in the city of Columbus. The purpose of the resolution is to recognize Columbus as a diverse community and declare our city's support for all of our residents, to stand by, to stand up as elected leaders against anti-Muslim bigotry, against hatred, against oppression, to promote local laws and policies that advance equality and value diversity, to never use fear as a political tactic and never succumb to fear as political pressure, and to work to fulfill the aspirations of our nation's founding father in partnership with you all and against all who would demonize or silence you. Again, thank you all for being here to engage in discussion and to enhance our community's progressive action and support community members of all faiths. So we kind of have three goals. The first is, and I know some of my council members have other obligations to prepare for, but wanted to have any council members that wanted to make comments to briefly make those comments. Second, have the panel at the table introduce themselves, and finally to kind of have a dialogue with you all and the panel members of what this relationship and resolution can help accomplish. So with that, I'll look down to see if any of my colleagues have comments they'd like to make.
Just quickly, in saying that, one, we appreciate council member Sensiano for taking the lead to pull together this important conversation, but two, that in Columbus, we celebrate diversity, and so Islamophobia has no place in our city, and I think that this strong stand from this council is just one, representation of that belief of our city. Thank you so much. This is the people's chamber of City Hall, and so we appreciate, there is no more fitting place for a conversation like this to happen than right here in council chambers. Thank you so much for being here, and thank you again, council member Sensiano.
I'll be quick. I want to say thank you to council member Sensiano for convening us, and just reiterate that anyone who thinks divisiveness makes us stronger really has no clue. I remember as a little girl doing a project about our country and what makes us great, and I remember drawing a melting pot, drawing all the colors of the rainbow coming together into a pot, and that a melt, and this idea of a melting pot is what makes America great. But actually, as I've grown up, I think differently about that. A melting pot means that we all come together and mash around and assimilate into one another. That's actually not what makes our country and our city great. What makes us great is that we're each a different piece of the puzzle. We're like a big jigsaw puzzle, and every piece is different, every community is different, and we fit together in a beautiful way that creates a full picture and a strong community. So thank you for being part of that puzzle that makes us so beautiful, and thank you for being here today.
So thank you to all my colleagues for those opening remarks. Next, I would like to have Roman Akbal make some kind of brief comments about the current state of Islamophobia, central Ohio, state of Ohio, and across the country.
All right. First of all, thank you to the city council for inviting the Muslim community here today. We obviously appreciate that. My name is Roman Akbal. For those who don't know me, I'm the staff attorney for CARE Ohio, and I'll very briefly speak about the state of the Islamophobia in Columbus and in Ohio. Now unfortunately, since last December, we have seen an increase in Islamophobia. We have seen an increase in anti-Muslim discrimination and anti-Muslim hate crimes, and unfortunately, things have not gotten better. They're actually getting worse. Our hope obviously is that once, you know, November, after November election, things will get better. That is the hope, but certainly that we have seen a rise in these incidents in the past one year. You know, CARE is a national organization. We do track these cases across the country, and this is something which is just not happening in Columbus. This is something which is happening across the country. Wherever there's a CARE chapter, they have tracked it, and they have seen a similar surge in anti-Muslim discrimination that we see here in Columbus and in Ohio, especially in the last one year. Now, we understand most people are good people in Columbus, in Ohio, but unfortunately, the people who are more hateful, let's say, have a large microphone. And what that has done is that it has encouraged people to act out in ways which I did not see before, and I've been working here for the last decade. For example, I have seen in the last seven to eight months where we get a lot of calls now about people going to the grocery store, going to Walmart, going to Kroger, where they are harassed on the interstate, inside these grocery stores, at a bank, just about any public place. And we did not see this before. We would get maybe a few of these a year. Now we're getting a few of these a month. So this is something certainly, just general harassment, you're just going down to the grocery store, you're just driving, taking your kid down to school, and you see some person shouting, screaming at you, trying to drive you off the interstate. This unfortunately, we did not see before in this frequency. It's happening now. In addition to that, we have seen a rise also in general discrimination cases. We have right now, just in central Ohio, we are representing over 60 people, who are 60 Muslims with cases of discrimination. So this again is a, is an increase in generally the number of people who come to us for discrimination. Again, our hope is that once the election ends, things would get back to normal, and you know, there will always be discrimination, and that's fine, but what has been happening for the past one year, especially since last December, just cannot continue, and this just has to come to an end. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. There's also Representative Jewish Voice for Peace that actually came to one of my community members and really requested that council would actually put together a resolution and to stand with their community. If there's anything like to share.
Should I talk into this?
Yes.
Can you hear me through this? So as a Jew, I was raised to believe never again, and what that means to me is never again will we stand by as a community and watch people be brutalized and victimized by extremist hate groups. And so it was very clear to me and the people that I work with at Jewish Voice for Peace Central Ohio, that this was an issue that mattered a great deal to us. But in addition to religious toleration, which I think is absolutely a core American value, we also need to promote more understanding, because it is, there is hate out there, but I also think it's fueled by ignorance. And I'd like to also encourage and challenge us to take on and learn more as a community from each other, so that we can better understand each other.
Most important part, to introduce your name.
Oh, sorry. Hi, I'm Amy Schuster.
And then if we could, this way from Amy, could introduce yourself, why your organization or the concern or the support, concern towards the kind of rhetoric that's out there, support for a resolution, what brought you here today, who you are, organization?
First of all, thank you. I'm so pleased to be here. My name is Karen Dawson, and I serve as a representative of my faith tradition, which is Unitarian Universalists, on an organization, you'll hear from several other people involved in this organization, called ICO, the Interfaith Association of Central Ohio, Interfaith Association of Central Ohio. And there are nine faith traditions that are involved with ICO. And I'll just do alphabetically, so you just get an idea, Baha'i, Buddhist, Christian, Hindu, Islamic, Jain, Jewish, Sikh, and Unitarian Universalists. It's an organization that's been in, in central Ohio for over 30 years. To me, it's the model of how we come together, and so once I heard about the resolution, not only did I applaud it, because sometimes I feel strongly that we need to walk the walk and not just talk it, we need to do something. It's not enough to be a bystander. We need to be engaged, we need to interact ourselves with people from various faith traditions, we need to share our stories, and that's how we build relationships. So just quickly, let me just share, one of the things I brought was just one of our brochures. If you'd like to know more about ICO, there's a website, and you could learn more. And in addition, we have a, something we're very proud of, a booklet that we just completed called Our Faiths: An Introduction. There's one page on each of the nine faith traditions, one page, one page for Christianity, one page for Islamic, one page for Jain, one page for each. It's a small booklet, but it has, it's a beginning point, because the question is, how do we, how do we build relationships? ICO's mission statement is that we exist to create an interfaith community based on understanding, friendship, and trust. And that's why I'm here today, is to help further that mission.
My name is Phil Washburn. I am the president of the Interfaith Association, and I represent the Christian perspective on our council. And I think, you know, Karen said a lot, but I think what, what she is really getting to the heart of is that Columbus has been an interfaith community for a very long time. You know, the Interfaith Association is over 30 years old, and it's because Columbus has been a, a community that has a rich diversity. And it's unfortunate that we find ourselves now in a time in which those who, who have made this home are now feeling as if it's not home anymore. In the Interfaith Association, that's something that we want to see changed. We want this, the United States to be a place where everyone feels welcome, everyone feels they have the freedom to worship and express themselves, their religious beliefs, based on their conviction. But most importantly, we want to see us, I think how Councilwoman Brown mentioned, the puzzle pieces come together. And for years, we tried to bring those puzzle pieces together through talk, through conversation. And I think one of the things we're realizing is more and more, we need to bring those puzzle pieces together through action, and that's something that we are committed to and, and working together with our community and helping to bring those opportunities to not learn about each other through discussion only, but also learn about each other as we, as we serve alongside of each other.
My name is Nimit Alpay, and I am a member of the Muslim community in large in Columbus, and more specifically Turkish Muslim community here. I am a council member of Ayako, Muslim council member, and I am very pleased to be here. I really applaud the effort made to pass this resolution, to bring this resolution here. Well, to tell you a little bit about myself, I moved to Columbus about six years ago from Michigan, and before, in Michigan, I lived about 15 years, so I've been in the United States for more than 20 years. And United States, and more specifically Columbus, has been a welcoming, safe home to me and to my family, and I want that to continue. I want that to, not to, not to go bad. So I really want to be here, and I want to reach out to all the communities out there, and I thank everyone for standing with us to pass this resolution. Well, there are many good people and communities out there, they already reach out to each other to fight with Islamophobia and to reject any biases, any prejudices, and one of them is also Turkish American Society of Ohio. Well, this little organization has been very active in the interfaith community, and I know New Islamic Center is one of them, Ayako has been one of them for many years, but with this resolution, now city of Columbus is bringing them, all of them, together, and this is a testimony of how great the Columbus people are, how great the city of Columbus is, and I am so pleased to be part of that. Thank you.
Please be with you all. Salaam alaikum wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuh. My name is Imran Malik, and I'm representing the New Islamic Culture Center here today. I didn't come prepared to have like a few minutes of introduction, but I definitely want to add a little bit of commentary here. First off, I would like to have another round of applause for the city council membership and the leadership, and the Jewish Voice for Peace for putting this initiative together and making, adapting this resolution here today. While I wholeheartedly agree with Roman, my brother and my counterpart here, and my friend, that you know, there is a lot of, you know, Islamophobia, a lot of hate that is out in our community, but I am the type of person who believes that, you know, the glass is half-full, and the other half can be full collectively. We all have to put our initiatives together. Together, everyone achieves more as the definition for the team. That is the only definition I learned in my two years of MBA that I went through. So I think collectively, this is, this gathering here today is an indication that, you know, there is a lot of love, a lot of cohesion, a lot of optimism that, that is part of our communities, not only locally here in Columbus, but nationwide as well. Yes, while there is a lot of hate that is going on in the current cycle of, you know, presidential race and political dogma that's out there, but it's also a lot of cohesiveness and a lot of support that we, the Muslim community, has been blanketed by the interfaith community as well. Together, everyone achieves more has been the model of our interfaith partnerships here in, you know, central Ohio, and I second Phil Washburn's, you know, vision as well. We all have to work and focus on faith in action. You know, faith in words has been an old school. I think we have to take it to the next level and convert our convictions to actions, and that is only going to happen when we collectively believe in our human values, in our constitutional rights, and together we can make a difference, not only here in Columbus, Ohio, but also nationwide. Columbus happens to be the testbed for food market, yeah? So if any food that is successful here, that is launched, is, you know, is successful in Columbus, it's going to be successful nationwide as well. So why not adapt a model of interfaith community's cohesivity that can be an example for the rest of the country as well? And I think on that note, I also like to, you know, inform the, you know, attendees here today, and also the leadership of the council, that New Islamic Culture Center happens to be one of the largest community centers and the most diversified community centers in central Ohio, as well as the entire Midwest. We have 40 different ethnicities that attend our congregation. That makes us again, surpasses the diversity inclusion in one umbrella, even compared to larger cities like Chicago, where like, you know, there's a larger population of Muslim community, but you know, it's not diversely kind of accumulated in one umbrella. But NOIR happens to be that model. According to ISNA, which is Islamic Society of North America, which is the largest blanket organization for the Muslim communities in Canada and the United States, NOIR happens to be one of the largest Islamic centers. It's not the size of our campus that defines us, it is the amount of activities that happen out there. You name it, educational, social, religious, cultural, outreach, interfaith, that has been our ambassadorship with the mission and vision of our constitution. And I think as Nimit already mentioned, that you know, we, we have a lot of, you know, different faith diversities in Columbus, Ohio. It's just a matter of bringing those energies together and let them blossom together instead of us trying to work in silos and recreate the wheel. I think that mindset has to go away, and with this resolution being adopted here today, I think that is the step in the right direction. So thank you, council, and thank you, JVP, for putting this initiative together.
You can hear me now? Okay. So this is very hard to follow after, right after Imran Malik, Masha Allah, awesome. I would really want to say thanks, number one, to Jewish Voice for Peace for putting this together and for council to approve it. Councilman Sensio, really, really appreciate this. My name is Zarqabid, and for those who don't know me, I am founder and president of My Project USA, a national initiative based in Columbus, Ohio, and we work on human trafficking, drugs, gangs, and several other issues, including bullying and preparing and developing our youth to address Islamophobia and all kind of other issues that are happening, including radicalization, violent extremism, anything that can happen to our youth. So I work with youth all the time. And then I'm also founder and chairperson of Muslim for Ohio Political Action Committee, which is organizing community for political power and also, you know, addressing all the issues on the, you know, how are we going to work with council and cities and state officials? So we just finished our two days tour with Sister Linda Sarsour, who is an activist from New York, and we were, we went all over the state of Ohio, and we are organizing a first Muslim voter, early voting day on this Saturday, and Imran Malik and many others are part of this initiative in Columbus. I really want to say that, you know, it's, I'm so proud to be, you know, a person with, in Columbus. I'm so proud to be resident of Columbus. This is something so important. I've lived, lived in North Carolina, I've lived in so many other places. My husband is an IT person, so you can imagine, we move so often, but, but Columbus is something special, and in my personal life, I prayed six months, Istighara prayer is a prayer, you know, when you go out, you ask God where to go, and he brought me Columbus, to Columbus. And then today, I think, is a historic day. I believe this historic day and council and the Jewish Voice for Peace and all other interfaith brothers and sisters have done so much for our community, and this is, you know, historic. So I would like to piggyback what Imran said, that now to our community members and everybody else who is sitting here with us, our brothers and sisters, you know, this is the time, the message that I give to our youth, and the struggle that we do is that, let's see, what are we going to do together? This is the time that we really have to look into hands-on projects, we have to look into, if something is being done, Alhamdulillah, if it's not, let's see, you know, what is the next step? So I would really, really love to, you know, to sit with more people, you know, we have already interfaith associations, we have so many things going on in New Islamic Culture Center. My Project USA is, you know, in front of organizing our youth, so let's see what is going to be the next step. And next step is that we are, as Imran said, we want to make Columbus as a model community for the rest of the nation, for the rest of the people, and the people who doubt on the strength of, you know, our diversity, they will see that what Columbus has achieved and what we can achieve together, you know, in future. So thank you so very much, and I'm here, and we are all here, we can talk about more in this discussion and later on.
Salaam alaikum wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuh. My name is Hassan Omar, and I'm representative for Somali community. I'm the member of Muslim community in central Ohio. I've been in Columbus for the last 20 years, and since I came here, I haven't had any problem with the people that we live with, the Americans who actually welcomed us. And we created a lot of businesses, we educated our kids, we become the part of the society. I remember back in, 15 years ago, September 11, when the incident about incident took place, there has been some sense of emotion, and I have seen several incidents and many other discussions, and since then, things has been actually reduced 100%. But this year, the election has created also another commotion when it comes to the way media talk about the Muslim community in this country. So I have children who born in this country, in Columbus, Ohio, and I do not want my kids to be separated from their own classmates, separated from their own coworkers. I don't want my child to see us as different, who is American, who is a Muslim-American. This nation was founded by, founded fathers, they, you know, they are, they found the religion, the freedom of religion, and we are here, no matter who you are, no matter what you look like, you tell us what you are, if you are Christian, Muslim, or two, and we need to have a coexistence. One thing that really today I'm proud of, the city council members, Columbus, Columbus city council members, who have put together this effort, which will have impact to our community. And even already today, when I was coming down here, I got so many people calling me, and they said, are you going to the city council? I said, why? They said, we listen to radio, and the city council are going to pass a resolution to the anti-Islamophobia, and this is a beginning. And as we know, that Muslim is a fast-growing religion, and we are having a lot of people who are coming to this country. So we need to treat people equally, not to see this person looking his, you know, to color of his skin, or language, or appearance, we have to treat the people as equal, as a human being. And also, this city of Columbus is becoming a big city and more diverse, and this is an example, and we need to work together. So I'm really very proud of being here today, the first group that witnessed this resolution. And I appreciated city council member, Michael Sensiano, who had this effort and made this effort. And we are, as a Muslim community and Somali community, proud of it, proud of him, and also we are willing to continue to create more, reach out at the same time to work for everybody across, you know, and then this is very important for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for being here and sharing those words and sharing your organizations and your experiences. I think the mic is going in. So I apologize. Want to open up, not just for the individuals at the big table, but to anyone in the audience that may have a comment or question. I do think Hassan kind of set the stage well in terms of what additional steps could we be doing, and maybe if any of the panelists want to add in, if this is a first step, what more would you like to say at the local government or state government level, so not only that we recognize our diversity, but how to be addressed ongoing concerns and challenges?
You know, I, I think we just have to speak up, because the voices of hatred are very loud. We know they are minority, but they're very loud, and it is just, it's, it is not enough for us, and the majority of people, by the way, are against this hatred of bigotry of against Muslims. Majority of people in Columbus, majority in America are against it, but the problem is that when you're silent, and when you're silently disapproving of these messages, that's not enough anymore in this climate. So it is time to take sides, and just like the city of Columbus, city council has chosen, taken a side, put the marker down, and said, no, we will not accept this, we need the rest of the city and the state for people, you know, high-profile people, leaders, to also basically put the marker down and step up and say, no, we do not accept this, because we do need to hear these voices.
And in addition, I would say, since I work with the youth, and I see that how youth personalities have transformed when we really give them the space and the leadership roles. So for example, once we adopted Sullivan Avenue to keep it clean from city, you know, keep city, keep Columbus beautiful project, literally, and distributing the food and everything, we have seen that those same youth who live in the same neighborhood where drug dealers are, and everybody, and all this Islamophobia is literally affecting them in their daily life, from wearing hijab to anything that little boys and girls have to deal with, with bullying, you know, their personalities change. So I have been, I would say, any, any opportunities that we create, and we literally, you know, try to make sure that we have more youth, Muslim youth, from all different ethnicities, be part in the leadership, that they are on a stage, and that would really transform the overall culture, and that would really save our youth from being radicalized on any other issues that they might have. So I would strongly say that city council would create projects, or would ask us if we could bring and choose our youth to be in those projects more. Thank you.
Or in the audience?
My name is Farida Alheneiwi. I'm a GIs analyst for the city of Columbus at DPU, and I was always like, you know, I had all my kids grow up in Columbus, and we, they always wished to have a holiday at the schools, where all the other kids would have a holiday off schools during, so this, I think, will enforce their identity, and they feel that they belong to the community, like, you know, the city will, yeah, approve their holiday. Thank you.
So I'm an educator, and I love that, I love that idea, and I think we could just do it anymore. Depressed? Oh, hi. I think we should encourage our, our school board to consider adopting a curriculum that could be an interdisciplinary curriculum, where students at various stages of their, of their schooling get information about the community here, about the faith, about the history of... of anti-Muslim activity in the United States and the history that resisted that as well. I think we could improve our public image. You know, I love this Columbus with the red that's separate, a different color, the blue Columbus. So, how about a Muslim that comes down off of that with a, with a red, the, at the, you know, of the us of Muslim, right? So, this is, this is just part of who we are and we can bring that in, even into our imagery, right? So, it's about reimagining our whole way of being together, not just passing a single resolution. But I do think this is the first step, it's an important first step.
So, you asked, what's the next step and what, should we continue this discussion? I think what happened and because of this unusual, strange election, the Muslims were demonized in a way that as if all of us are refugees or the refugees who are coming to this country are, you know, are trapped to the peace and the security of our citizens. And nobody is saying anything about, who are the Muslims that are coming to the United States? Are they all refugees? What are the, the dynamics of the Muslim community in the United States? So, I was a student at one point in Kent State University and we had close to 1,000 Muslim students in that campus at one point. Maybe at least a couple of hundred and maybe 1,000 or less. And many of them came from countries that are not, do not qualify to be refugees and they are occupying all these apartments near their campus and they are buying and selling and they are economic power for that small town, Kent, Ohio. And every major campus, every major university in the United States have a large Muslim students, international students, students that came from every country you can think of. We have so many Muslim tourists that come to the United States. We have so many Muslims who come here because of, they have some kind of a profession that, that they get hired, either IT or doctors that come to the United States that get, you know, they establish here in the United States. We have, of course, we have the refugees, but that's not the majority of the Muslim population that are coming to the United States. So, we have Muslims that have been here since the beginning of this nation. As you might read from the history, some of the slaves, African slaves that came, that were brought by force here in the United States were Muslim, some of them from West Africa. So, this discussion about, you know, they are coming, we don't know where they are coming from, we don't know who they are, is simply nonsense. And let me say a few things about, one word about the, the varying of the refugees. It's most extensive background check you can think of. They know who you are, they know where you came from, they know what you have been for the last 10 years, they know who your relatives are, they ask you every single, I was never a refugee, but I know how the process works. They ask you every single question that you can think of. So, this notion that people are coming from Syria and whatever and nobody knows who they are, it's just nonsense, it's not true. They have a varying that, I don't think that we have any varying like this in the United States. So, let's, let's educate our, our fellow Americans and let's, you know, get the word out. Thank you.
You had it first.
My name is Samia Alzir. I'm the vice president for the Arab American of Central Ohio. I'm very pleased and honored to be part of this act today. On Thursday last week, I was speaker on, on behalf of Muslims immigrant and my brother here was, was there. And we were there to find a way to have the workplace inclusive for Muslims. And we received so many questions and we found out that people really, especially employers, fear so many things because they really didn't know all the information. So, like my brother said here, this is one of the things we really try to clear out, the immigrants as, they have to go through, through three different state agencies or federal agencies to be cleared, then through a very, very detailed search of health, search, a drug addict, you cannot enter the country. You just, different agencies through. So, they go through the Homeland Security, FBI and CIA and so, the word that been used in the media lately of scared, scared people, that there might be some terrorist associated with sneak in. Word doesn't exist in that process. The word sneak in, that, so, when we click, showed them how the process goes and, and how it's easy to accommodate certain holidays and Ramadan and whatever in the schedule of, of the Muslim employees, they were hired more refugees and more immigrant. So, I think great job, we are all moving in the same directions, but we need to make sure that we clear.
Since the youth have been mentioned a lot, I think it's important for us youth to speak up and say thank you to the council first of all for organizing this resolution because we, as youth, see you guys as leaders and we, I mean, you are where we want to be in the future. So, when we see leaders stand up for us, when we see other people supporting us, that encourages us to be better leaders in the future because we all read different books, we all call God by different names, but inside each of us, we have one heart that can love. And since this council is showing us a message of love, it just increases the love in the community and makes us stronger human beings and citizens of the world.
Bismillah wa rahman wa rahim. My name is Nur Gul Darah. I'm actually the president of the Noor Islamic Cultural Center. So, I really appreciate the council for putting this together. And really, this is what's going to make America better. You know, if you look around all the different, not just different religions, different colors, different nationalities, this is what really is going to make a difference in the long run. So, I really applaud the effort of everyone who is here and the only way that we are going to become better is by working together and standing with each other for the long run. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank you all for taking the time to be here. The staff want me to get us getting going for our meeting. It's exciting. Columbus and the city council is about to take a stand. Very proud of my work, of the work with council member Liz Brown, council member Shannon Harden, President Klein, President Pro Tim Tyson, council members Page and Mitch Brown as well, to bring this resolution forward today. We couldn't be more excited, but we know this is the first step. And so, really appreciate the comments. Our doors, our offices always open. We understand that our community thrives with our diversity and want to continue to work forward, not just to get this resolution done, but to also work so we can address some of the things we've heard today or things that may come up. So, thank you all, thank you to the panelists. At 5 o'clock, we'll get the resolution.